I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first thing is roll call. Sorry. First thing is roll call. Chuck Campbell?
Here.
Bridgette Hayes, I'm here. Brooke Lefebvre? Earl Moore?
Here.
Curtis Ward?
Present.
Thank you. We have a call. First thing is the approval of the minutes of the executive session and the special meeting as presented. Any questions on the minutes? Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Chuck seconds. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Minutes are approved. I mean, I'm sorry that the minutes are approved. Oh, that's this thing right here. Okay. Next is the claims and payroll. Any questions on the claims and payroll?
I'll make a motion to accept them.
Want to turn your mic on? There's a motion to accept the claims and payroll. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Earl seconds. All in favor? All opposed? Curtis abstains. There you go. Let me just do this at the bottom right here. Yep. Next is the ordinance amending the tax fees for the water utility. This is the Senate reading. So just a reminder, this ordinance talks about amending the, amending the tapping charges for the water from three-fourths to one inch is what's $200 and now it's $1,000. Inside city limits, it's $1,250 outside city limits. And then it goes up two inches, four inches, six inches, six inches and eight inches. So eight inch is a thousand, was a thousand dollar tapping charge and now it's 2,000 inside city limits and 2250 outside city limits. And then we also added a $25 inspection fee and approval from the utility department, just as a reminder. While the first instance was read as November. Am I supposed to read this?
You don't have to read it. You don't have to read it minimum either. The only requirement is to read the first number and title.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2022-26, an ordinance amending chapter 50 of the code of ordinances of the Town of Brooklyn, Indiana. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Ordinance is approved. The second ordinance is ordinance 2022-27, an ordinance amending chapter 50, one of the code of ordinances of the Town of Brooklyn, Indiana. This is to change the tapping fee for the wastewater utility. So the previous dollar ounce was 500 and now we've changed that to a thousand dollars inside town limits and $1,100 outside town limits. And then we also added a $25 inspection fee as well. Any discussion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Earl, any motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Chuck seconds. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Brookville Golf Hall Preservation LLC. Please state your name and speak into the mic.
I'm Dave White. And I just want to give a chronological events that happened from August 2018 to now. Social media has done a lot of things wrong and I think the Town Board and the citizens deserve to hear exactly what happened. August 18th, or August 2018, the Renninger family contacted me to split and sell 173 acres of land in public option to sell. I'm not a golfer, so I am auctioneer. So they asked me to do what I was, what they wanted me to do. I went to the county surveyor at that time, Joe Gillespie. And he saw the same thing that I saw, that the golf course is important for the community. And he said, a lot of people, or a lot of places, have been discarding golf courses and that's probably the best solution if we want to keep a golf course. So I went back to the Rennickers, suggested that. Then several public meetings occurred and were held with overwhelming support from the county commissioners, county council, county school officials, several community business owners and local golf patrons and enthusiasts. Through those original meetings, brainstorming began on the matter as the community could proceed in preserving the golf course as an 18-year golf course for future current generations. Then late in 2018, the town expressed interest in buying the golf course in Anex and Reservoir Hill. But there was no way they could meet the timeline that was required by the Renninger family. So late in December of 2018, a group had ended with those agreed to purchase the golf course with intentions to keep it for the community until the details of the town transfer could be made. In January, the LLC was formed and entered into a lease of the Renninger family and operated the golf course through that next year. Finally, in 2019, in November, the transfer was made to the LLC from the Renninger family. We bought the golf course for 1.1 million. And we agreed to sell it to the town for 1 million. We knew that was not a good business decision, but we felt because of the community, there are a lot of manufacturers in the community. We are a tourist community and a transit community. People live here and work other places. We realized that it was important to maintain this golf course. Our LLC endured several tragedies, the most devastating being the passing of Dave Chatten and Marty Flue, who both understood the importance of the course to the community. They were instrumental in this project and both determined to make the golf course that the community would be proud of. Another major art obstacle was the clubhouse fire and then rebuilding process. In mid-construction, the destruction of the transit via windstorm. Also, Greg Raff had a brake accident falling through the floor noise repairing the deck. The accident resulted in a trip to the hospital, two broken ribs, two months of rehab. And all of those things only strengthened our resolve for this community. Many things have changed since 2008, but our LLC has unanimously agreed to honor the 2018 early agreement to sell it to the town for 100,000 less than we gave for it. Early in this process of support, we got a letter from the superintendent of schools. And there was a caption on that letter that caught my attention. And it said that it is attitude and not circumstance that makes success possible, even in most unlikely conditions. Our conditions certainly were unlikely and we were fighting enough to have battled, but our resolve remained consistent. Our mission statement was and has always been that work field preservation LLC has been formed for the sole purpose of preserving the golf course. We as LLC members have not wavered from our commitment to preserve the golf course for the benefit of the community, town, and the county. Since the first meetings with the town, several additional improvements were made. Extra golf carts, improvements to the grounds and such as that. There's no reason to mention those in detail, but we took the golf course and improved it all the kinds that we had. Our LLC has been transparent throughout the entire process and negotiated in good faith with the final objective of preserving the golf course for the community and attempt to draw visitors to our beautiful Brookville area. Our hope is that the new owners, which would be the town, would meet this challenge with the same enthusiasm and commitment that we have led for the past three years. At times in the process seemed, at times in the process, it seemed few in our community wanted this project to be adversarial and confrontational rather than cooperative. Our original goal and the goal of the original Town Board Commissioners, County School Officials, and concerned citizens was to keep the golf course for the community, for people. We did not anticipate the controversy that would follow with transfer of ownership to the town and the division number three in our community. Two specific issues that left us concerned that political wins may leave our original goal in jeopardy. First, the reluctance of the past Town Board or the time involved in finalizing the thing left us concerned with their original goal, which was to keep it for the community, had wavered. Also, during the last political elections, we're not sure as an LLC of the long-term intentions of the new Town Board. We just want to tell you that we sold it, we bought it with intentions to keep it a golf course. And we hope that the town has those same intentions. If it's not the intentions of this or future Town Boards to operate this golf course, we're prepared to buy it back. We don't want to buy it back. We want the town to operate it. We want transparency to be involved. We want to know if the town supports the golf course. It's not a, not something that's just going to be run for a year or so. We will overturn that, but the town intends to run it. If the town is committed to the original goal to agree upon in 2018, we wholeheartedly hope the new and future Town Boards will seize the opportunity to ensure the community remains complete and continues to track businesses, manage residents for the future generations. We are totally supportive and wish many continued years of success for the town and for the operation of our golf course. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood we didn't do this for personal gain. We did this for our community. And we hope the town representatives are aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. White. Do you want an answer or?
An answer. Sure.
Or do you just want to make a statement?
Well, that's, that's the feelings of the LLC. That's why we did what we did. We didn't intend to split the county. We intended to give them an opportunity that didn't exist before. So if the town intends to operate it, that's wonderful. But if politically this board feels that the past boards have made a problem and made a mistake and are looking for a way out, we want to tell you that it's still important to us that it remains a golf course. And that's, that's the intentions that I was supposed to bring forward.
Well, I don't know. Do you guys want to comment or do you have anything to say? You guys?
In the purchase agreement, they listed something that the Town Assembly that said that we are willing to keep the golf course for at least a year. Or was?
It says golf course or green space.
Correct.
Yeah. It says golf course or green space. It says golf course or green space.
Well, you know, on the face of it, of all those, all the social media things, the rumors just fly crazy.
Absolutely.
You can't believe much of what you hear. The people that post such things are not worth it in the meetings that all this took place. But yet they come up with, you should do this, you should do this, you should do this. The only reason I want to be here is to tell you that our intentions from day one was to keep this golf course. And we still feel very strongly about that.
So Chuck, were you thinking that we have to keep it a golf course? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sort of.
Why are you thinking that we have to keep it a golf course? Because of the law? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's my, I think it's good for the town.
Roger that. Okay. Thank you. You guys have anything? I mean, I personally didn't know why you wanted to come up. I don't know why, though. This was, if you're, I, first of all, I appreciate everything that the LLC has done. Let me start with that.
Thank you.
I do agree that there's been a lot of information on social media that has been wrong. But unfortunately, I think that that's because of there was a lack of transparency, in my opinion. From the purchase to the understanding about the equipment that as far as the public, well, as far as I was concerned, because I was not involved with the talks amongst the council, it was a surprise to me that there was equipment out there that you had purchased. But once I met with Larry Wunsberg the other day and he explained it to me, it made perfect sense that the contract itself says that it includes all the personal equipment that was originally in the, from the Rennickers. And after I read that, it made total sense.
Yeah.
And of course, you guys would have purchased new equipment in the two years that you ran it. Again, makes perfect sense. Unfortunately, that, that explanation wasn't,
Very public.
in my opinion, wasn't clear.
Yeah.
Clear to the public. And, and that's unfortunate because I don't want, you've got, I'm sorry that it turned out to be a fight between the public and the LLC. But that's what happens, in my opinion, my opinion only, when you're not, when you, when public officials,
Not access.
when it's not known. And I ran on the fact of transparency. And I think that transparency with public officials only, can only build trust amongst the public. But if things aren't divulged to them, they end up not trusting us. And that's not what my intention is for the public. I want everybody to love living in Brookville. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that that happens. In terms of the long-term commitment from me, I'm sorry I cannot give that to you. Because I'm going to govern how things come to me and make decisions based off of that. I like the golf course. I'm glad it's there. I'm glad we have it. My biggest concern right now is that we do not have the financials from the first year that we've run it. And when the purchase was made, we were, the public was told that it made money, but they couldn't tell us anything specific. And so these numbers from this past year are very important to me.
Sure.
And Gina's going to have those by the end of the month, probably. And I think that that will reveal a lot. Because if, you know, we lost a million dollars, well, we might need to think about some things, for sure.
I can also do you know what you're going to be wanting, or man?
Understood, sir. But unfortunately, I'm sure you don't make financial decisions without looking at the numbers.
Right.
And I won't either.
Yeah.
And so I completely understand where you're coming from. But for you and for the other leaders of this community, if you're concerned about, for me, if you're concerned about how I feel about any subject, just call me. And I will come and talk to you and tell you exactly, like I sat down with Mr. Wunsberg and we spoke. I was honest with him. I'll tell the public the same thing I told him. I'm available to talk to if you want. I don't want turbos. I'll share it.
I'll talk to you more.
We will tell you how we feel about things. If, if you want to help explain some things, that would, I think, is more beneficial to us because we are new. And we don't have all the confidential stuff that happened in the past.
Yeah. Well, if it was a mistake made in that two-year span, it was that it should probably have been more open and transparent. We followed our instructions. We've got to do it this way. And that's what we did. But some of our LLC members, you know, they didn't care whether I came or not or whether I didn't. The reason I came is basically what you said, for transparency. I think the citizens deserve to know that the sacrifices that we made, we made for this community. And we feel very strongly from the beginning, announcements Dave Chatten, Marty Duffin, Greg Raff. We don't want to go through all that and let, let it just go away. So if you are looking for an out and you say, past board has made a statement, we don't need to be in the golf business. And we're giving you an out. We don't want to buy a golf course. But we don't want to work three years and see the town do something that the promise is not kept.
Well, I think the promise was kept. We bought it.
Okay.
I think that was the promise, wasn't it?
Yeah, the promise was you were going to buy it, and that's a golf course. And hopefully you will.
Then we fulfilled it.
Could it be helpful for you and Earl if we, since he's willing, since he's here to express that he's interested in helping you guys, you know, get that information? If they want to share the financials and share the board to you, I think that would be very helpful. So you guys have a baseline to look.
That goes for me too. Even though I was on the previous board, I had no information.
Yeah.
And just point of clarification, we weren't, we were getting copies. We weren't allowed to keep, and we weren't allowed to document, and we weren't allowed to share that. So we were able to give the high levels back to the board members. So if the LLC is, you know, asking for board's commitment, I think it's only fair for the three people that didn't see it to see those financials if you're really looking.
The main thing I'm saying is if you're looking for a way out, to get rid of all the controversy, you have a way out.
Also, just for clarification, if, if the council, this council decided to dispose of the property, it still has to follow the state guidelines for disposition of property. Doesn't go back to you, you have the price that you purchased. And even if it goes tonight, you said that the, the average of the two appraisals was over, it was near $1.29 million. So I would imagine that anybody who wants, since that happened, that you yielded over $2 million for purchase. Also, one of the clarifications, that there's a 10, there's a 20-year bond along that with a 10-year, it's not common for 10 years. So if we would sell any small piece of that property, the whole amount of interest that we do in that 10-year period of time, we do along sale of any particular piece of that property. So we will hopefully be able to sell it to a device that would exceed $2 million in order to cover the cost of appraisal plus the cost of bond and pay that out.
So we're not looking to buy a golf course.
I just want to, since we're providing facts, I just want to, to do that.
If you want to get down to the details, the details says if, if you don't want it as a golf course and,
It doesn't say that. It says green space. And we purpose stated that because the passport was not interested in committing to running a golf course for 10 years. It was going to be a business venture. So I've agreed with Richard on this, that the current board cannot make a fair statement on what we're going to do with that golf course in the long term. And so we've seen how it's played out. We, we had, we had data that was given to us that we agreed on. We relied upon Sparky's data that he provided, we relied on LLC's data. Now the council will rely on council's data in order to make the decision for Brookville. And like I said, I think it would be helpful for the board members if the LLC is willing to, to help provide them some guidance of what it could be because they have not seen it. They've only heard of discussing a public meeting. I think that they would, they would welcome that opportunity to get those facts.
If you're willing to be transparent, that'd be part of being transparent. We have been transparent from the start. The transparency was not absent because of the LLC. We have this everything.
But the number of wrong statements.
I'm sorry.
The number of wrong statements. Evidence is not. It said, everything that made money, nobody.
Well, there was a clause in the final contract that we're not allowed to say disparaging things about the passport.
That's not, you're not allowed to say disparaging things about the town, Brookville.
So we won't, we won't tell you what went wrong. But we will tell you that we have gone through three years for the community and for the benefit of the citizens. And all you have to do is run this golf course, that's fine.
So, Mr. Ward, I just want to ask, are you willing to go with the financials with Earl?
I don't have my interest.
Is Mr. Wunsberg?
I'm sure he has. We have not kept anything from anybody. I don't, I don't.
No, no, I know. Well, the other thing I want to ask is that I've never run a golf course. I had no idea what it takes.
We hadn't either.
I haven't talked to Jess yet. It's on my list of things to do, but this is actually the first full meeting. But I would like, I would like to know if you, if the people that ran it would, could sit down with me and give me some pointers.
We have been cooperative from day one and we will continue to be cooperative. We want this to be a success for not, not necessarily the Town Board, the community. And anything that we can do to help the community, to help the Town Board, serve the community better, we're all for that.
Great. Thank you.
There must be a small group of the LLC members who were during transition. And I think our officials said they had volunteered to serve in, it's kind of a greetings advisory. Come on, Zach, grab.
It was me.
Yeah.
A greetings club to where their members are there, they've played there for years and they wanted to, to give them feedback as they were making decisions on if it was a positive or anything. I think they would gladly sit down with me.
That would be great. I would like to schedule that soon.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Next is the Monarch. So. Okay, so the Monarch from Zemra Tractor for, for Kabuto Moer for $9,140. This is for the street department?
Street department, yes. So Renner has all his Moer equipment up on his cycle to trade in and replace. It was my fault. It was his year, this year, to replace one of the Moers, but he failed to put it in the budget. He said he does have plenty of funds left in that equipment that we had budgeted for. He said he does have plenty of funds left in that equipment that we had budgeted for his permit. So he's just asking for a purple trade in that one mower to just fill him in on.
And we had to create this because it's nine thousand dollars?
Correct, so all the permit heads outside of, I think, Tillies Water, Weasewater have a max purchase policy of three thousand.
Three, okay.
Yeah. I think water, Weasewater, due to the expensive items, maybe it's ten thousand.
And do these, and you don't have to get a one-month code for this?
I think in our code, under, I sent that today, under twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
It's not required.
I see, thank you. Is there a motion or any discussion about this?
I'm gonna go to the third.
Is there a session?
All, sir.
All in favor? All, motion passed, you can buy the tractor. Do you want me to sign this or anything?
You can just sign the bottom of it and date it, please.
Next is the architect drawing approval, so this is in our building, we've all been waiting patiently. We finally got the architect ready back from Greg Marks from GM Delaware. The outline, I guess, the plans that were discussed with the previous board to put the police department in this building. I guess since that, they also think of putting the town or the water department. Gina and Jess is office in there too, there's also a meeting room in here, lots of warehouse space for those of you who are in this building. So Greg Marks needs our approval of the authority, and then he will submit for the permit. He expects, if we sign this tonight, then he expects to get the permit by March first and sets it up for construction to be completed in June and then occupied in July. So we do have some, at least I have a bunch of questions. Chucking out all through the Sony employees, and Greg's gonna be back with us on some of those questions, so I guess for the board's safety, does anyone have any questions, or would you like to make a motion to approve?
Which side is it, first or second page?
So the first page you really has is my stuff, I can't use PowerPoint to kinda say what we talked about, it would be a little true.
Okay.
It's not, it's not this. I think the first team I said had big plans, I just cut and paste it out just to fill in so we could actually see it.
Not making a motion to approve, please.
Chucking in a motion to approve, is there a second?
All, sir.
Curtis' second, it's all in favor. All opposed, motion passed, so I posted an email to Greg and just saying, yes, we approved it, and I don't think he gave us anything to sign, or?
He did not give anything to me.
Okay. So the only thing about the Zimmer Building and Curtis, you don't have to answer it clearly, but he wanted, he, so the budget for renovations is two hundred thousand? And he's paid the roof, Gina, and the electrician, the new roof and electrician, and some more. And he hasn't had any invoices, and so he's not sure how to go forward with renovations because of the work that your company did. So are you gonna submit those invoices, or I don't know how that works?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Can he do that soon?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Okay, next is Ullisby Memorial Car Show. So it looks like Janelle and Andrew submitted the Bennett Ullisby Memorial Car Show at the Town Garden on Sunday, August thirteenth. It will be their eighth year, lower portion of the girls softball fields, and a concession stand.
We're gonna go ahead and walk all the shelters down, as well, put it around the border, just because they have a lot spread out.
Any questions on that?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Or are we making a motion to approve? Curtis' second?
Second.
Chuck's second, it's all in favor. All opposed, great, we approve it, motion passed. Next is the rehire policy regarding vacation and longevity. Gina?
So I don't have anything in our handbook regarding termination and short-term rehire directly after. I did some research with an HR firm that we had already been passed. They didn't really have their values organized because of the policy is a state, and they don't have insurance. So I guess what I'm looking for is cancelled termination, how you're about to handle that. So the employee was terminated on the thirty-first, but then five days later, well, to me, I'm not sure what's the policy, like, do you wanna consider him as rehired, but then they lose their vacation and longevity? Or just after a certain amount of time, they're allowed to come back? I have two other communities that gave me two different answers. So I'm just looking for, right, how would you like to handle this, to communicate at this time, so I can process?
So my personal opinion is that normally, I think the council usually has a meeting on January first. Normally, every year, it's just this year happened to be administrative issues, we extended it to the venue.
Sure.
So to me, it just seems like it's terminated on the thirty-first and then rehired the very next day. I just, I feel like we should just keep it going. That's just my opinion.
I agree. Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Can I make a motion to that effect, Chuck?
Yes, I'm making a motion to that effect, but there's no, no lots and so it was fine.
Is there a second?
All, sir.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So three to one, Curtis opposed, motion passed, he just stays the same.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the Indian Landmarks contract. Jess?
Sorry, Jared Holbrook has been with us this entire year. This past year, his contract was with the preserving Main Street grant. So then, for this year that we're on, he'll be contracted till the end of the year. We just had our first meeting of the year, two days ago. The contract, and we had talked about this during budget too, I brought it up during budget, but there was no contract at the time. So we approved him being on the budget, but not the contract, so I'm just asking for approval of his contract for the year. It's thirty-five hundred, sorry, go ahead, it's thirty-five hundred for the year.
And it's from January seventeenth to twenty-twenty-three until September thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just him working with our historic preservation commission, connected meetings, regular, any other issues, and he's in his work, so.
So, the initial professional service agreement was part of the grant we received, and it was useful for when the seven HPC members hadn't attended the camp, so nobody had a guideline tour done yet. I think it's a bit of a redundancy, myself, now we have seven people else that's attended the training, that there's guidelines that they review and act. And then we have Jess full-time that also specializes, should specialize. And it's my, I hate that it's you can have too many services that offer similar things, so I think it's a redundancy, that's just my opinion, I think it was useful when we needed it, but now if you have the board members, they should, they should do that job.
When was the board, when did the board have all those seven members? When did they all come on board?
I don't know. And I think it was, well, it was before me, so.
It was January last year.
Oh, January.
And then they had camp, they had waited until the Indian Landmarks put on the camp.
When was that?
July.
August?
July.
So. Thank you, Nancy.
September.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to ask, can you step forward, stay there and? So my name's Nancy Maine, I'm the executive director of Main Street. And so I was involved in the process of all this, and Jess checked in, and Curtis also. But my understanding is, according to the, what's it called, Jess, it's the the preservation standards that were established by the state, what's that name?
The, I'm sorry, like the guidelines, you mean, or?
Yeah, enabling laws.
Oh.
Right. And then there it states that when you have a historic preservation commission, and that there are COAs that need to be approved, which is part of the historic preservation commission, so they're appropriate, that you're also, if the town municipality is required, this needs to have a staff to be able to process those. And so what's, so what the Indian Landmarks has done is that they, at very low cost, provide those contracted services to be able to meet that standard. And as far as Jess and the staff that process that, that part, I don't know, I don't know the qualifications are, but all their requirements are. That was, that was the original intent, so in twenty-twenty-two, Jared Holbrook, Indian Landmarks, actually fulfilled that process, but it was at a zero cost, it was so close that even the year, he did not, you know, it was using the word, but he did not charge a fee in twenty-twenty-two. And so this contract was, is a part of all of that. But I just wanna add that piece to it, that I would, that the board and I wanted to do a bit more research before in exactly know what the requirements are before not approving the contract.
And then I'm sorry, I will say too, during our meeting, Jared did say that after this year, that he will transition out, meaning that there will be, I guess there's a person in the region that typically would have been our staff member, but that position was vacant. So Jared stepped in for last year and then this year, but at the end of the year, he will transition out.
Right. So that's, that's the intent for Indian Landmarks, was to fulfill the requirements of the enabling law? Because I knew that this is out of consideration for the budget of new families, small new families.
Thank you. I guess my opinion is that since this is our very first year doing it by ourselves, and we just got trained in September, I want it done, I want to do this stuff right, I think it's important that, I guess he trains more, makes the new members more familiar with all the law schools this year. Because then once he does transition out, then I think they'll be able to do it again, I don't know, but that's just my opinion. I'd rather have someone there during that first year, that's thirty-five hundred dollars, I think, I think he's worth it.
He did say, he did say too, obviously, that they went to camp, but then we have a new member, Joe is our new member. Jared did ask the other night during our meeting if the members would be interested in like continuing education, so we may not always have, see a way to approve, but still meet once a month to go over, you know, any topic that they have questions over. And I think everyone agreed that they would like to do that, so that's something that we're gonna start next month.
Are they, like, an hour, you split with Lynn, you do hour, thirty-five hundred dollars for, they don't always meet monthly, so it's flat fee, if they meet ten times, three hundred fifty dollars per meeting, that's more than paying the turnist. Right. That's my thought.
That's a good point. What do you guys think?
How about we, with a medical meeting, sort of, we need to research on?
Chuck?
Yeah, I agree, take more.
You want a motion?
Medical, medical, medical meeting.
So it's clear?
Second.
All in favor? So we're gonna take this, and do some more research?
So clarification, what would you like me to do? As far as research, I mean, this, the contract was given to me by Jared, so you just wanna let us know?
Let's see if he would charge by the hour.
Okay.
And then maybe make a decision that there are any COAs that he, that we don't have to meet, that the resolution doesn't say anything to meet every month?
It doesn't, it, sorry.
It does or it doesn't?
Since there's, there's set fees once in a while, but if there's no COAs, they cancel meetings.
Correct, okay, they don't have to. But again, he
December didn't have to.
And he suggested, in lieu of that, if we wanted to do training during that time, so if we didn't have COAs to approve for that month, we could not meet, that's fine, but if, you know, the members wanted to meet and just train and go over things, then he would do that too.
Being a person, I would find, if we're paying thirty-five hundred dollars, I think they, he should be providing content, so if it's thirty-five hundred, he's supposed to meet twelve times, and they don't have, like, he agrees, they don't meet, he's providing some sort of education, so that it's not just like I don't wanna waste thirty-five hundred dollars that we should have, like, people that paid to go to camp.
I mean, it makes sense, yeah, it does.
So having them have some kind of training objectives, training objectives, or any meeting that they don't have a COA?
Okay.
And then, so they have, always have them background, and they see if they'll allow, and then contract to do it by.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is retail commission loan. So this is just normal commission loan for sixty thousand dollars for all the new retail, retail commission members. It's just, just signing, and it opens space?
Yeah, so the open loan right there, and so just fill in the date, and then each council winner will have their signature.
But everybody signs?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is for Tom Factory, BDC, Tori Lyer, John Lestrade, and John Russell, and is it Beth Long here too, or?
She's a non-voting member.
Okay, so now, not her. Any questions on the loan? Motion to?
I'm making a motion to approve.
First, make a motion to approve, is there a second?
All, sir.
Earl's second, it's all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is the ordinance for the indoc signed authority.
So. So indoc requires, they utilize docuSign, it's an electronic form of signing agreements contracts. Since there was a change in council, the president, they need notification. They did have certain requirements, so the document is resolution or minutes. I have that ordinance that we did last year, it's probably the quickest and fastest way to get the information that they need. So the ordinance just basically states that the president of the town council is hereby authorized or confirmed to have the authority to execute any indoc agreements contracts, and all the documents related to, and all documents related to any indoc agreements. So, community crossroads grant or those contracts, sort of things like that will be sent there into you. You are listed as the primary contact, that's then the information with this ordinance, and so everything will be sent there into you for signature.
Electronic signature, right.
Correct, so.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to?
Yeah, I'm gonna go shoot past the ordinance, twenty-two-three-dash-y.
Oh, sorry, I need this ordinance, twenty-two-three-dash-one, ordinance of the town council, the town, both state and the mill, concerning authorization for execution of indoc agreements. Motion is on table, Chuck, is there a second?
All, sir.
I'll say it.
Earl Second is all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Building permit issued. There's a building permit for Dale Nobby, 12044 St. Mary's Road, for a 2530 renovation with an A by 34, which is not back at existing house.
So Mr. Nobby was in the office the other day and asked if he would have to reapply. I've not had a situation where, because there was no time limit or expiration. He had already been to the county and asked, and the county suggested that he come access first. Because I don't think the person in charge of the office at that time knew exactly. So I thought maybe I'd already to council. Jess hadn't had this experience before and neither did Tim. So everyone thought that maybe it's a council decision.
And I thought too that if he had to apply for a COA, that he would...
He would be able to start.
I know, but I didn't know where he was when we had the discussion and then after I saw the address. So we thought we should ask against the clarification.
So this is because this permit was originally submitted in April of 2021?
Mm-hmm.
So like he didn't do it and I was going to do it now?
Well, I think he said the cost of materials was too high at that time and it increased so much that he just fell off. Unfortunately, our permit was $2, the county's is much more. So I think it's not really our permit that he's concerned about.
To be a property then?
He said he didn't.
I know he has a 12-month expiration, we have to reapply.
Whoever was going to the office that day, I'm not sure.
They're going through the transition, but they are, if you don't get your draft filled in 12 months, you have to reply, I have to reply.
Which would make sense. Like, and I would have thought that there was some sort of expiration date too, but we didn't have one. And again, we've never had this issue. So we didn't know if we should also have one?
I think, I mean, I think moving forward, it's hard to retrospectively say it's all about 12 months. We did say it's 12, 12 months. I, county, unless say that and you fill out theirs. I think for us to move forward, everything that we do from here on out falls to county 12 months from the date of permit to have it completed. Otherwise you pay that different fee again. But my opinion is since it wasn't specified, then I would think, I'll take this source as well. And it's $2 for months, but I think county's going to make a way for that permit.
That's their deal. Do we need to change the code if we put that, that it expires in 12 months?
I think you need to start talking about the permit.
That's kind of what I was...
That says this expires 12 months and...
12 months from today.
Yeah, dated issuance. And if it's not completed, you have to reapply after 12 months is up.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed? I'll figure out that wording in a second. Thank you. The next thing I have is on area of responsibility. So one of the things that I was thinking we could do as a council is to do what the commissioners do and what other communities do, which is each one of the council members takes over, not takes over, is responsible to kind of liaise with a certain department. And so that person becomes, you know, you just establish a relationship with the department head and you kind of figure out what's going on. So you, you are the council member, we come here that knows most about it. And then you can also tell them what, you know, like employee mediation factors or something. And then if they do have an issue to bring to the council and they can't attend to explain themselves, you'd be the one to help the other council members to understand so that we're all, you know, covering down. And so I kind of get a list of all the areas of responsibility. Police, fire, water, sewer, street, golf course, school. I put Main Street, Inc., and I put the historic preservation. Because I, you know, I thought maybe we could talk about it. I also put my name next to the police department, the golf course.
Why did you put your name next to the golf course?
Why did I put my name next to the golf course?
We just admitted 30 minutes ago, Mr. White, that you know nothing about a golf course, nothing about running a golf course. Do you remember that?
I do. Thank you for allowing me. I put my name next to the police department, the golf course, because I'm kind of tired and I don't have time. And those two departments seem like they need extra attention. This year.
I'm retired, so I don't have time.
Well, then you can, you can put your name for anything else.
Can you do two people?
You can do everyone. We can, I mean, this is a discussion. I just want to tell them now on the departments.
I think the idea, you don't get a DA's on your department, bring it back to the town.
Earl, you heard former volunteer fire department?
Yeah, I heard. You fire department?
Earl wants to mark.
Sense.
Yes.
And you want to visit the water sewer?
I, I will. I just don't want that perceived conflict with the sewer. If we're doing extension on the hill, I don't want to be in charge of the sewer and have that perceived conflict.
Why don't you take, why don't you take the street?
I'll take the street.
And the park. Okay, first, street park. Water sewer, is that you?
We didn't want our sewer.
Why not?
That's the law. I think we use water sewer, but...
This is, yeah, the whole world.
I mean, if, if you want to go down to how conflicts were technically divided, it uses a lot of sewer, but it's more sewer as a conflict. But I think there's more perceived conflict. You're either doing the sewer extension up the hill or you're charged with a partner.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Maybe we can go down to work. Pool?
I'm breaking the door. I actually studied a little bit about it.
What about Main Street and historic preservation? Do you think we need to rep for that, or?
We have had a, from, or along Main Street in the past. Kathy Belter was there for quite a few years.
Oh, she was on the board. She was on the town rep. She was just on the board. They, she was official board member.
She would come back to board, give updates for us if there was updates.
So, so Curtis, you know, you're correct. Actually, Kathy served a dual role. She was a voting member on the board, but she also was the local town council. Right. She, she had a group vote, what she asked.
I have ability on Main Street and I have to serve on Main Street. We're fully, I have a real team for several projects, but also a lot to do, so.
Oh, this is not a certain on the board.
No, no, no.
This is just a...
A liaison.
Go to the meetings, tell us what's happening, keep us up to date.
Liaison.
Answer their questions about what the town is doing. Okay? Curtis, okay?
Okay.
What about historic preservation? Okay, well, maybe we'll table that with the board. But maybe she wants that. In the meantime, I'll see if anybody's interested in water, the pool. If not, we might just have to talk about this again. She's here. But all the laws, if she's interested.
Thank you.
Thank you for supporting that project. The next is department head audits. I don't think we have any, Gina?
I don't have any, so.
Okay. The next thing I'd like to talk about is, oh, just to give an update on the rules procedure. So will we revoke those in the first meeting? So Earl and then, or he, he usually update those when we are, I think we're at the ninth stage. So we will hope to present those by the next meeting. Then I wanted to talk about, oh, the core team. So Jess, James, and myself have been attending this past week training for the health program to the Hoosier and German Legacy Program. So one of the things that we did this last year is the town, that's the program with John Palmer is a part of. We committed all of our ARPA money, which is like $530,000 or something like that, to this program. And the county committed a million to this health program. And once we did that, Oprah matched that money with a million dollars. And so what we're going to do with the county is the county's going to have 750,000 of that million. And we will have, no, sorry, 666 of that million. And we will get 333 added to our 530. So maybe about $800,000 or $900,000 in this health program that we'll be able to do projects on and improve the, the town in all kinds of different ways. But Jess and I have been at the Health Bootcamp and the Community Development Course these past couple days to learn more about the program and how we are going to be engaging the community in different groups and different ideas so that the community has a voice in how we're going to spend this money. Because this is everybody's town, you know, community, that's one of the best ideas. So it was suggested to me because of the core team has already been chosen and announced, but they aren't actually officially appointed in any way, shape, or form. So it was suggested that we go ahead and appoint Jess and I officially at council so that at least we have something to hold back on. Because the makeup of this core team are the ones that are going to be deciding which projects to forward, which projects are included in a strictly limited investment plan for the community. They don't have any decision-making abilities about spending money. The town council will continue to make decisions to spend that $800,000. There won't be any projects done unless this, this council approves it. But this core team has a lot of responsibilities to form and plan itself. And so I think we should have ample representation on it. And I just wanted the board to appoint Jess and I to the core team for the health program.
I'm making a motion to appoint you and Jess to the core team.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed, all abstained. So three to one, thank you.
I will add to it and say that I think that it's been a great course so far. Very, very beneficial.
Good.
One thing that I did not do at the last meeting, because I was a little nervous, was to explain Lynn Flehrman's contract, our town attorney. So in the past, the town council has had a contract with an attorney, Tam Davis and Grant Reeves, where it outlined that they were paid kind of like a salary or, you know, I think Grant's contract was $18,000 a year to do routine business for the town. Lynn Flehrman does not do contracts like that. So her contract, which I did not explain to the public last time, is that her, she just does it by an hourly rate and it's $300 an hour. And so if you're used to seeing an attorney here, that's not going to happen anymore. Lynn is not going to come to these meetings and watch us govern. She will be here if we have a complicated issue or something that we, we think she's going to have to explain legal things. But she's going to be just our legal expert. She's not going to be an extension of the council. She's a contractor. And so what we're going to do before the meeting, if there's issues, we're just going to call our doctor on the phone. And then after, we're going to do the same thing. And she's just going to give legal advice. She's not an operations person to give us advice on how to go. If it's, you know, she's very good at legal advice, only. So I just want to make sure everyone knew that. So, you know, of course, our goal is to keep those fees down as much as possible, only engage her when we need to. But Gina can engage her anytime she wants, of course. So I just wanted, and the reason why I say all this is because in 2022, from claims that have happened, Gina, the town spent $64,000 on legal fees. $27,000 for Tony Saunders and the discipline area and the safety board. And the grants was $18,000. And we also gave those to the community $15,000 for local, local matters as well, in addition to the grants. So I hope that this year we can keep it, you know, below 30. Because in 2021, the town spent $26,000. And in 2020, the town spent $24,000 on legal fees. So hopefully we stay around that $20,000 to $30,000 mark. And I know this is going to be different for a lot of people to get used to this relationship. So if it doesn't work, we'll fix it, we'll change it. But I appreciate everybody trying to see if there's some other related stuff. So I just want to make sure that the public knew about that. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I just, I do want to say in the past, department heads had also been relaxed to town council and reached out to them. So I don't know if maybe we need to have that conversation with department heads. Like, it's not like she's contracted, it's an hourly contract. So there might be questions, you know, if that needs to be said or it is willing to say.
Yeah, maybe the new council members that are in charge of their departments can make sure that their department head knows this is how we're going to do it. And I would just say the department head has a question, maybe they can vet it with their council member first. And if their council member doesn't have the answer, then maybe they'll make a decision to go ahead and address him. How do you, is that okay?
We talked about that in Lynn's interview with us. And I think our response was funneling through council as much as possible to make sure costs are, are low. Because if it's an hourly, if it's an hourly basis and we have department heads that are sending their quick emails that are counted as quarter hours.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to do that. So. I think after the last meeting, Earl and I got together and just made a list and sent a meeting. And she said, hey, when you serve this, I'll get you in a meeting. And so she talked with us about all the different questions we had. So I think that's what I want. Last is, so some of you may have seen the news article about a federal suit against the town. Just wanted to read this. The town council is aware of the lawsuit. But given the matter is in litigation, members of the board, the town employees will be unable to comment on any matter that will be handled by attorneys in court proceedings. So if anybody has any questions, our response is just going to be a comment. The attorney that's handling the issue, his information is public record. So if you want to ask him any questions, Gina can give you his contact information, but he's just going to say the same thing. No comment. It's a pending legal matter at this point. The only other thing is just kind of getting effective on the transition. So, you know, this, this week, or these past two weeks, I've been learning a lot. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to, to meet up with Curtis. So Curtis, is there anything that you can tell me that there's, that I need to know? Is there anything to transfer over to me? Any keys or any equipment of any kind? I'm not just fall back on my own experience. There's always equipment that you can hand over to any person, nothing. No keys, no nothing. Is there anything else I need to know about that I haven't? So I'm now in a position of I don't know what I don't know.
And you're going to come to the meeting, so should be careful about that.
Okay. Let me say this. We didn't have a side of the camera that does all that.
I agree.
Okay. That's all I had. Do you guys have?
I have nothing.
I'll have either.
Is there any questions from the public at this point? All right.
Just a reminder, you had a second question, you did not want it, and it all failed.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for, yes, that's in our rules procedure. Well, yes, you can ask a question about anything you'd like.
I'll make a motion with you.
Chuck, making a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl Second is all in favor? All opposed, motion adjourned. Meeting is closed.